Okay.
Sorry.
Jason.
June.
Hi.
Good.
Hi.
Jason.
Mike Gobson.
Jessica.
Mike Gobson.
Jessica.
Hi. Okay. Section three point five is the U S C L P I. Oh. Sorry.
Second.
Sorry. Jason.
June.
Hi.
Good. Jason.
Hi.
Mike Gobson. Jessica.
Mike Gobson.
Jessica.
All right, we're going to section four. Um, losing my voice at a very inopportune time. We have a building committee meeting that this morning. We're going to hear more about future meetings, Jason and I around that. But, um, not very much today. Just looking down roads, so we can play a little bit of videos and presentations on. Forty nine. Um, so we got down there with all the reports coming out. That's pretty much it. I did attend a board president, vice president meeting a couple of weeks ago. Um, and the new president of B C C, and he shared some of his challenges with us. And he's like, that's since he came on board, very, very nice. Alan R C guy, um, I don't know that. Um, but, uh, you should see it's really changed a lot from, uh, five years ago. But anyway, it was a very good meeting, uh, for always to hear from our other divisions. Um, in our area four, um, Brett Wise there, then bring for the area four, um, some research reports. And, uh, I love knowing that we have this support.
Uh, the, uh, following program is booming at the school. So it's just, uh, for students, it's something we need to call on your hearts. It's just really booming.
That's what people show us, pretty much everything. First, uh, first is something we have to do next year. It's about family and friends and, um, certainly we have a lot to thank them for. Um, I'm fortunate that I'm, uh, I'm the New York State Council's School Supervision Executive Committee. So there's a few times a year that we get to meet with commissioners, advisory council, um, which would be the commissioner and then obviously her retired cabinet. This last thing unfortunately, the commissioner wasn't able to make it, so the deputy commissioner was there. Um, and it was really, really informative. There's a lot of work that's happening behind the scenes. Obviously with the blue ribbon rollout with the updates and graduation measures. Um, they're looking at teacher, uh, teacher certification reform, which is different ways to think and get creative, um, to help folks certify. Uh, so there's really some good things, good things happening there. There's some conversations around school calendar and some future flexibilities. Um, I think there's, you know, there's been more and more holiday dates added, which is pretty to strain on, on school districts for their, their hundred day day requirement. Uh, so they're, they're looking at those options. Um, and just, you know, from a legislative priority standpoint, one of the messages we've kind of heard is that this year's revenue outlook is still very unknown. Um, it went from a nine point three billion dollar deficit, um, to now they're at a four point three billion dollar deficit. So hopefully it keeps trending in that direction and, um, you know, things, things are now okay from a budget standpoint. Um, just real quick, so there is on the governor's desk for some technical changes to the pilot language, uh, which we are hopeful that takes place. We've been, we've been working on that for, for several years now because of the way the pilot calculation works for us. Hurts our district a little bit and we're waiting in hopes that the governor's going to sign that, but we have no, no information at this point. So we have a couple of presentations tonight. Um, we have our folks from Bosie's who are going to present on the Capitol Project. Or first, uh, we're going to have Luke McAvoy and Peyton Simpson, who are going to present on the mascot, the logo development process, all the work that's gone behind the scenes. These two have done an incredible amount of work, uh, to put this all together. Everything is, was hand drawn and they're, they're going to show you and talk to you about that process. And I think they did a great job of getting something together. You guys can jump on here, but, uh, again, it's been a, uh, a very thoughtful, thought out and time consuming process. And we appreciate the efforts of everybody that participated in it. Several staff members that were involved and of course our, our student committee, uh, which we couldn't have done any of this without them. Uh, I'm sorry to finish, so, uh, once she said, I'm ready to go do that. We're just wanting to kind of highlight the process of, uh, what we went through to get to that initial release on November fifteenth. And, uh, where we'll be heading from there. Well, I said that road, and hopefully we'll see some other examples out there. Um. There we go. All right, uh, so again, we, we made the initial release of the designs that Peyton put together for us on November fifteenth. Um, the, the, the process was a, a long process from when we made that first initial, uh, changeover to mascot. And we wanted everyone to kind of understand that it wasn't just a pick the first one and go with it. Uh, as you can see here, this is just a selection of kind of where we started, um, in that initial design planning and kind of brainstorming sessions that we had. Uh, the whole, whole idea behind it was to create something that would be a, a brand, uh, unique to our school district. A lot of research went into it for, uh, we looked at other school districts, colleges, um, professional teams, semi-professional teams that had either the Hawk logo or River Hawk logo, uh, to get some inspiration. Uh, through the initial mascot change and all the dialogue we had, um, a lot of community members had submitted thoughts and ideas of what they would like to see, uh, in it as well too. And behind it, we, we focused on the, the unique characteristics of the Osprey, um, so it would be tied into that. And then obviously, um, our red and blue coloring, uh, from there. So, um, as you see, that's the process that we went through, a lot of initial designs. We brought in our, our student committee several times, getting in small groups, uh, to go through some of the designs. And then we had one day, we finally narrowed, uh, a bunch of things down, they came in and we had all on paper form and they went through, uh, design by design, showing through all the different, uh, things you can see on there from, from what the eye might look like. If you just slide the, the eye off to a different spot, if you added certain colorings, uh, the shape of the feet, the shape of the head, uh, where the feathers go. Uh, that was, that was a wonderful pay of feedback that we got from them. Uh, and we were able to go through that, kind of check the list off of what people liked and did like. Um, and, and in fact, continue to narrow that down, and narrow that down, um, just to some of these options. I think this is kind of the last batch that we went through. Um, and then also part of the design process is, is the, the unique colorings of our school district along with what the, what the birds options are. And then what they look like when you put them on, on different backgrounds and take away some of the colors or, or add additional colors to that as well. Um, another big piece is the, the hawk or the photography that we use. And then the, the talent features, um, most of them aren't necessarily familiar with the Osprey. Uh, we did our research on that. Uh, the talents actually tend, uh, one of the outside talents can flip around, so it has a two by two one in certain types, tries to grab certain things. So we messed around with that look. Um, then we ended off things down to the matching of the characteristics are in the aesthetics to make something that, that looks appealing. And, um, you know, people, people will, you know, catch their eye and see the unique colors. So I think some of the, here's some of the, the other mascots that are out there that we kind of like to be looking for inspiration. Some things can be kind of, you know, cartoonish or, or look like the real thing. We wanted to say as true as possible to the, to the real bird, uh, and in fact, provide some of those marketing step around. So, uh, those that might not be familiar with the bird itself, to kind of see where we tied in for the head. Um, obviously stay away from the yellow eyes and the white, um, as it kind of right through here. The different streaks of the forehead, uh, one of the good things is the, um, the dark stripe across the eye. So it worked out well to be able to use our blue, uh, in that and then mix in the red coloring. And, uh, obviously we brought in the, the black for the standard eyes, something into, uh, any of our school district. But, uh, keep, keep it as true as possible to that bird as much as you can be concerned with or whatever. Again, to kind of go back to the towns, as you can see there, uh, in that top picture, how it has moved a little bit. Um, like I said, we messed around with some different sizes of the towns and, uh, settled on what, what we currently have here. Uh, and just for that aesthetic, you're a can for the, the, the normal, uh, look that you can from, from birding or anything. And that's how we got, that's where we settled at at this point. Um, the, the logos that we released the other day, um, Peyton's still working on, um, some other options that we will have moving forward. Well, we, we will have a full, uh, wing, uh, version of the Zoll tube that, that is coming. Uh, we're also working on a district seal, uh, that will incorporate some of the smaller things of, um, the river and the downtown community area that, that is also, um, in the works. Um, what I, what I pass out to everyone there is our branding guide. This is the biggest piece, kind of where we're at. Uh, cause as soon as we released this, everybody was like, I want a t-shirt, I want this, I want that. And everybody started reaching out. So what we've been doing initially is internal, uh, rebranding and branding, um, with our music band, uh, our athletic team. Um, obviously our athletic department, uh, all those things. So we're handling things in friendly initially. Uh, we're not releasing, uh, anything publicly for just anybody's use at this point. Uh, they just contact us directly so that we can make sure that people are following, uh, the branding guide that we had in place. Um, and to highlight some of the things, uh, that are in here.
Just official logos. Um, it has official logos, official font, official colors, um, and then different variations that you can add.
It's our, our initial, yeah, our initial release was all watermark that obviously nobody would just take them and, and start mass producing whatever they want. So that we can kind of, uh, make sure that the process is being followed, um, appropriately. And that first initial, uh, launch of items. And we're working closely with, um, some local, uh, print jobs and, uh, some of the other businesses that we work with, uh, every time some of those things. It has, uh, specific colors that need to be used, uh, so that we make, make sure that everything is matching the way we find, um, in this school district. So those that want to use it, obviously need to kind of contact us. It helps that Peyton, uh, has several students that can also help. They've been following in the process in the initial designing. Um, they're working with some of these programs that reach out and say, I would like this type of logo. Uh, so it's a chance to teach some of the students, um, some, some real life action they're, they're writing. It's kind of helping to design some of this thing. Um, so it's a, it's a neat piece to have, um, especially the internal, where people can reach out. And we've got, uh, our ability to print some of these, uh, t-shirts, banners, uh, smaller options as well too, uh, in our tech department. Uh, so we're working closely with them, uh, as well. And, um, the other, other neat thing, uh, is, uh, briefly after our building trades department about, uh, putting up some structures. As everyone, I think is aware, we have built the one messes up in the right side of the stadium. Um, but, um, there's several places that have those where you can build structures that encourage more, uh, of birds to come. And, uh, Figurale does that, so we're starting to look into that and send that along to them. It might be a project that they're going to look into in the springs and different spots around campus, uh, to put up some, some structures that will hopefully encourage some more of the, the Osprey to come and, and do this. So again, that's where we're at. We're excited to keep rolling forward with some things and, uh, obviously to get those t-shirts and anybody's help to people. Um, but yeah, if anybody has questions, just ask, they can reach out to us and we'll work and handle them. And in this group, we make sure that it's in, in the right direction.
I have a question on the, when could we, when could we get our t-shirt, or can we do our jacket? When could we get this?
Yep. Uh, and hopefully soon. I know a lot of our, uh, as I said, the music department, we're working closely with them. And a lot of our sports teams have already reached out and have incorporated, uh, bits and pieces of what we have into their, uh, arrow swords that are out there. And, uh, I don't know, a couple of local businesses put on, on the school shirt live as well too, so that, that's out with people.
You don't have a general, I was asking.
Yeah. Yep, yep. Sure, yeah. Like I said, internally, we have the building studies, uh, hopefully manufacturing and manufacturing services and smaller resources. Yeah, I said, students and staff and the community. And then once it gets out there, then it's out there. For, for sure. Yeah, that's the best part, working with very much students. And Peyton, Peyton backed all throughout and it hasn't involved in the design process. So, you know, we've been done that, so they were, they were really, really proud of it. People seemed really, really excited to give, give us the shirts and some footies and whatever. Thanks very much, appreciate it. Much done. Okay, so next we have, um, Mr. Myers of BT Bosie's and Mr. McNair. They are going to present to you, uh, the Capitol Project that is to go out on boat on November twenty ninth, twenty twenty two. Um, just to give you an overview of what about that.
We want shirts.
My, my, I don't sound like a child, but you know, right. Yeah. It's, 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 it's. Tomorrow let's get together.
So just so you know, so what we pre-did, that's when we had, uh, ten other boards, it was all that.
You know what I heard? Yeah, the five don't work for us.
There we go.
There we go. There we go. There we go. I'm sure we're going to get, okay, good, thank you. Again, I'm Dan Myers, I'm the executive operations officer at Bosie's and, uh, with the Tom McNair, our assistant superintendent for instruction. Now Rebecca was hoping to be here, but she had to be at a, at a district superintendent be up at home. So, uh, I'm just going to cycle through this pretty quickly. As Tom mentioned, we've done this ten other times and, uh, certainly don't want to cut you short on anything, but for about the last eighteen months, we've been working on a master facilities plan at Bosie's. And, and as part of that plan, we looked at all of our facilities. Uh, we do a building condition survey, just like school districts have to do. So every five years, we, uh, have building condition survey, a lot of findings in that, which we'll look at a little bit of that. We look at our enrollment projections, how we utilize our facilities today. We have a number of facilities, uh, throughout the root power region. Uh, we look at opportunities for how we can move things around, which we've been doing a lot of. We also look at, as you can see this plan on, on BT Bosie's website, just go to btbosie.org, uh, the full plan is out there for you to look at. We focused largely on, on the Glenwood Road campus. This is where the majority of, uh, the instructional programs are housed, both our C T E and our special ed. Uh, that's the main campus. That building was built in nineteen seventy two and much of the infrastructure is the original infrastructure. So our H V A C systems, our electrical systems, our plumbing systems, gas utilities, all of those sorts of things are original from nineteen seventy two. We did a referendum in nineteen seventy two to construct it. Our next, uh, referendum for construction was two thousand and three. And we put an addition off the back of the school right here, it's a two story addition. You may have been in that innovation before. Uh, that was the two thousand and three, they still refer to it as the new addition at Bosie's. So, uh, it's, it's a top comment actually. Yeah, so you're working on it. So, uh, we want to present to you a little bit about what we're looking to do in the, in the future. Uh, it's now twenty twenty three, we've retired the one, the two thousand and three gap. So it's a perfect opportunity for us to do something. So I'm going to let Tom, uh, talk to you a little bit about enrollment. Some of those might be tough for you to see, Tom, you're going to want to point at that.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, rare.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so what you see here is really the enrollment from the end of last year. And you see at the top, it breaks it down by instructional program, Bosie's C T E, which is your trades program. Alt ed, which is your kids who generally, uh, sometimes are at risk of graduating. And then our special education program, you can see school districts here. We're a total of just over twenty five hundred students attended Bosie's, all Bosie's programs last year. Okay, so this is, uh, Owego's. So you can see, you know, forty eight kids in C T E. Uh, some of those are going here now, so that's good. Um, and I haven't looked at this slide yet, so I think that says, uh, ninety total. So all, so you guys are using, Owego's using the service at Bosie's to the total of ninety students. This is all of our programs, not just at the edge center where the project is going to be, uh, taking place. So this here is really just the education center. So as you can see here, it goes from two thousand and twelve thirteen to the end of last year. Breaks it down again, C T E, special education and alt ed, really just to make those three, these are the three main, uh, areas. And then it, it shows the next ten year projections. And so really what we projected, well, what we saw was a five hundred student increase over the past ten years with no additional space. So we were already full and we added five hundred more kids into the education center, our main campus. So we, we need a project. We need to do something about that. We're not able to meet the needs of our school districts because we don't have the space. So we need a project. Uh, thirty seven percent increase in growth over the last ten years. Um, all big classrooms are now two, three classrooms, closets are bank closets, etc. So we've used every inch that we have. This year is our projected growth for, for the, for the next ten years. We've seen huge growth already in C T E, this is our trades, this is your welding, this is your carpentry, your nursing, etc. Uh, we project about a twenty percent increase in that area over the next ten years. And then even bigger than that, we see a huge, uh, our old tree program, which is our autistic population. And these are my numbers, right Dan? So in the year two thousand, one in one hundred and fifty kids are valued as an autism. Last year, one in thirty six. So we just can't keep up. This population seems to be, uh, our school districts need these classrooms for these kids to meet their needs and it's, it's growing. So we project huge growth over the next ten years in these two areas specifically. These three areas are mostly health on our main campus, so we'll go there. But we've expanded, we're using, we have, we have channel forks, Owego, Windsor, we have C T E classes in each of those. We also have kids in district based classes and our special education programs as well, just to meet the needs because we don't want kids on wait lists. Because many times that means they're being homeschooled, they're being, you know, taught that way, etc., for everybody. So we need space. This is really just a brag slide. Uh, we do something called signing day. Uh, you know, we had ninety seven, so what that is, is if you were going to go to a Syracuse University, you believe to play B one basketball, you'd have a signing day, your parents would come, the coaches would come, parents would come, and they would sign. And we did the same thing for kids who get jobs in our region because we're about results. We're not really just about teaching for the sake of teaching. We want, we want to see results. Some of these kids go to college, that's fine too. We have articulation agreements and college credits for all the kids to come to our Bosie's trades programs. But this is ninety seven kids, whether you're in special education, uh, alternate education or C T E. Uh, we want to have any results for them, whether, whatever that is, transitioning high school, college, work, workplace, what, what have you. You can see here at the top, uh, some of the areas that we've signed kids to in our region. And that's room at time with counties, uh, you know, automotive, health sciences, etc., etc., really giving kids jobs. Below that, some of the things you may not be aware of, we, we built, we work with Matt Factor Humanity and we build a house. Uh, we're on our third house, we build a house every two years. And then we, we, families are moving into those houses from our community, place for them to live at a cheap world-class price. Uh, the key to all of this, whether it's, you see on the left, left here, working with the discovery center, giving our kids the opportunities to work there, to be in our communities, whether it's community service, actual job skills, etc. And then help the community along the way. So we do all of these and actually result space. Really, it's, it's really ten, twenty slides, uh, that they can do for a crowd. Uh, this slide here really just leads into the scope of the project, which we need to talk more about. This is our education center, uh, space needs analysis. So this is from last year and really C T E, obviously, you know, when you're doing carpentry class, you need, you need big spaces. So that takes up a lot of education center space. But we, and what we've had to do, and we're going to see aside from being in the minute, we've had to put kids in places. It's not really the best situation for them to be successful. So you may have somebody doing occupational therapy, driving a bike down the hallway with kids getting off the bus going to their carpentry role in secondary class. It's just, it's getting out of control. The new space that they were going to need, and this also shows that fifty six percent of that new space will be current that trades, uh, space. And then right behind that, a new special education. I'm just going to stop there for a second, see if there are any questions for me before I get back over to Dan for the school.
No, it's good, any, uh, where on the campus was, uh, this new, uh, structure, the new campus?
Yeah, Dan will, will show you exactly. There we go.
Perfect, uh, timing, any questions? Thank you for that.
I'm sorry, you're good.
I'm just kidding. So I'll just kind of walk through what we're looking at for projects, go from there and be in a moment. I'll, I'll start up here on the top left, what's called the building trades building, that little purple square. It's about a forty five hundred square foot Butler or Morton style building that we're looking at constructing. Last year, we, uh, received a grant from Donald Ardo's office for a million four to construct that building. Really a pretty basic building. Uh, that would be where our heavy equipment, uh, can go and put a classroom in there. I'll show you what that looks like. So we have the money, we have the land, but legally we're not permitted to build without authorization. Uh, the second item here is the C T E addition, that's seventy two thousand square foot, two story addition. As Tom mentioned, it would be large, uh, C T E style classrooms. Uh, one of the challenges we have with our site, it's kind of hard to see, but this, as a, kind of where I'm drawing the dot, it's a different color. So it's black and white to the left and then colored, this is our site. It's a very limited site. We have wetlands over in this area, there's a radio tower here, we can't build within the radius of. We, we really have, have no other space. So in order to put that building there, we have an old, uh, maintenance building, operations and maintenance building that we would remove. Again, it's also a, a, like a prefab, uh, pre-engineered building. And we're looking at actually acquiring this piece of property. There's a home that sits right here. Our board does have a contract on that house that would also be in the referendum. Uh, acquire that property and locate a maintenance and receiving building here. One of the challenges we have in this campus, as Tom mentioned, so your buses are coming in here, right? They come in here, drop students off back here, they're bound to turn around. Meanwhile, these are all garage bays that have equipment coming in and out. Our heavy equipment's back here, so tractor trailers are coming back here for deliveries. It's really chaotic on the campus during school day. So our goal would be to get that stuff away from the main campus, uh, pedestrian traffic, the students, uh, buses, and, and have deliveries, uh, for our receiving department here. And that's where our, you know, cell phones and that sort of thing is at.
So Dan, with yellow, our best, Glenwood Road.
This is Glenwood Road right here, yeah. This is the instructional support center. And then this is our main building.
But there's a lot of, there's, uh.
This, so that's the distant education center right there, yeah. And then I have highlighted here in the center, infrastructure improvements and renovations. As I mentioned, our nineteen seventy two infrastructure is in desperate need of some, some replacement. We do have an office allocation for maintenance and receiving, we own a small parcel across the street. A lot of logistical issues, uh, Glenwood Road's a busy road. A lot of, well, just a gold issue, uh, Glenwood Road's busy road, it's forty-five on our road. So, uh, and there are some wetlands issues over there. If you haven't dealt with, dealt with wetlands recently, there was a recent ruling by the Supreme Court that gave the, uh, Army Corps of Engineers jurisdiction over the wetlands. Uh, and the Army Corps is eighteen months out of being able to get boots on the asphalt, they'll get a few wetlands. We can't do anything until they make a jurisdictional determination, is what I would use that part of. So that is an alternate location, you know, if there were any other, uh, site issues. This is what the heavy equipment trades building will look like. Again, it's a Butler, uh, really very basic building, pre-engineered. Uh, you could buy a building like that and have a contractor construct it on, on our existing site. One classroom, a couple bathrooms, and then big garage bay area for the heavy equipment. This is a rendering of what a two-story addition might look like off the back of the campus, with a new bus loop back there, uh, for CTE student drop-off. Uh, again, two-story, probably block construction, pretty, pretty basic, uh, virtually all classrooms. There'd be a couple of, of bathrooms, elevator, and maybe an office or two, but, but, uh, virtually all classrooms, basically. Obviously, doing that maximizes the advantage of the school. Our operations and maintenance building, again, a very similar structure, uh, modern or Butler-style building. Uh, we do have a, a, a place on, on the state here where school buses, uh, hang out, actually. They do drop-offs, they do multiple pickups and drop-offs. And, uh, we have a break room for bus drivers, there are always school buses from all of our districts hanging out there. We would put electric charging stations in if the electric bus thing ever, uh, makes its way to reality. I know there are lots of issues with that, but, uh, being able to accommodate that sort of thing is, is also in our, you know, plan. So Ed Center renovations, which would be our electrical system, uh, complete replacement. That electrical system, we can't get parts for, we can't get transformers, we literally can't get breaker for our breaker panels. Uh, we can't get switchers. So if we have any power problems between now and, and the time in which we can replace that, we're gonna have some significant, uh, issues. HVAC is old, we've got rusty fascades on the building, you can go up there, you can, you know what I'm talking about. And then as Tom mentioned, uh, doing some rework inside the building to, to get those, the, the, the mobility challenge students away from where the entrances are to the main campus for students, or to, to the main building for students. That is problematic, and some of the spaces aren't, aren't well-suited. Tom said we, we basically stole every square of that building. We even moved the career development center out of the education building, right? The, the place for kids to go, to, like, work, work on, uh, uh, you know, the resume, do interviews with, uh, local employers. Uh, we moved that to another building. Uh, a couple of, uh, things that, you know, most of this you, you know. Anytime, uh, there's a purchaser, uh, who are acquiring land or constructing a new building, doing an addition, it requires a voter approval. Votes in Bosse's are very complicated, it has to happen across the sole supervisory district, so it has to be all fifteen school districts. So any eligible voter in any of the fifteen components, uh, can vote on this project. Uh, we do have three polling places, I'll show you that shortly. And because the financing would be done through the dormitory authority, we would not be issuing bonds, and the schools would not be issuing funds. We would literally add the bond payment to the capital charge that you already, uh, paid Bosse's for to, uh, pay the debt service on that bond. So no local board action required by any of our, of our school boards. Uh, a couple of other things you may not know about Bosse's, uh, we're not permitted to have a capital reserve. So when we do any sort of project, if we have money to do a project, we have to do it in the year we get money. Um, so that's really problematic for us, because we can't set aside money every year if we have surplus. We can't build a reserve of any type. We're not eligible for smart schools, safe schools, stimulus funds, any of the funds schools are eligible for. The one advantage is that, that, uh, school districts do receive Bosse's aid on, uh, capital expenses. So those funds are returned in the same year, which is, have been paid as other Bosse's programs, the aid comes the following year. Right? So through capital expenses, the, the fund returns, the, the, in the same year. This is how we would pay for it, the dormitory authority, uh, would be a twenty-year bond at forty million. We would allocate annual capital and operating budget funds from twenty-three, uh, through twenty-twenty-seven, seventeen point two million. I'll show you what that looks like. And then we received a grant for one point four million that we can't do anything with until we get voter approval to construct it all. We have to break this into multiple years. So because we wanted to limit the amount of borrowing, we would use operating funds, uh, over a period of years. We can do small projects every year. Uh, the alternative to that is go borrow a whole bunch of money, and then try to jam everything in, and you start working on this stuff three or four years from now. Uh, so you can see here, we've got a number of projects, uh, set aside, you know, to be, uh, completed over multiple years. So this is how it works. Today, in twenty-three, twenty-four, we collect eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars from the public school districts. So the fifteen school districts shared the cost of that, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. That was paid on our two thousand three addition, that was our bond payment on the two thousand three addition. As you can see, at the bottom, the dormitory authority bond payment is now zero because of twenty-three, twenty-four, it's been paid off. So that gives us eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars to work with out of our capital budget that we literally have to spend this year. Uh, we would allocate funds out of our operating budget, two point five million, and then we have a state municipal grant of one point four million. That gives us four point seven nine five to work with this year. In order to, uh, get to the point where we can borrow funds, because you know that when you start a project, by the time you're actually constructing it, you're borrowing, it's a two-year wait. We would increase our capital budget to the school districts by eight hundred thousand, and we would do that for three years in a row. When we get to the twenty-six, twenty-seven year, that's the year we start borrowing. Again, the reason we do this is to minimize the impact on the taxpayer, and also to not borrow with one hundred. The alternative would be, you borrow seventy million, and you jam it all into twenty-four, twenty-five, and, or, or twenty-five, twenty-six, and then you have a big jump, right? Then we're borrowing for all of that. So the, the annual bond payment would be three point two million dollars there. And you can see that on the bottom, that's, that's what we're projecting the dormitory authority bond payment to start. So those are the funds that would go toward our capital improvement project. So if we took that financial plan, and you matched it up against the various things that we want to do, these things are gonna move around a little bit, because, uh, things are happening at a different pace. We find out there's wetlands, we can't do it, in that year, we gotta do it another year. Uh, it's gonna, it's gonna move around a little bit. So what does that mean for Owego? So the way the capital budget works, if you're not familiar with that, the Bosse's capital budget is, well, I'll talk just about the eight hundred and twenty-two thousand you probably did bet. You're responsible for about six point nine one percent of that. That's a formula that's, uh, driven by the state, it's based on your RWA. And, um, we take that amount, and we divvy it up based on, uh, enrollments across the districts. You, you know those change from year to year. Uh, you generally hit right around six nine one, then it's six eight nine, then it's six nine three, right? It's very year to year. Uh, to add eight hundred thousand dollars would be fifty-four thousand, oh, sorry, fifty-five thousand dollars for Owego. That would drive thirty-four thousand Bosse's data to the same year. So the net cost would, we go for twenty-four, twenty-five, would be twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand. The tax levy impact would be point one two percent. We would do that for three years in a row, we'd get to the point where we can start making bond payments in twenty-six, twenty-seven. So it would be twenty thousand, twenty thousand more the following year, twenty thousand the year after. And then essentially, the levy increase goes to zero, because we've got to the point where we can.
And period three is the sixty thousand dollar net cost.
Correct. Right. And then, then it goes to zero, because we, we start paying on the bond, unless we were gonna do another project and borrow again, or, or something else happened. So this is, uh, how it shakes out for Owego, it's two point five nine percent of the, of the, uh, total share. Uh, sixty-three percent roughly is in state aid, the local school district pays about thirty-seven percent, and the end is two point five nine, it's thirty-four point seven. It's a point one two percent, uh, not, twelve percent, it's, it's twelve, right, it's twelve and hundred several percent, um, on the local. We have polling locations in three spots, one happens to be at the former Treadway Inn. We wanted something that was easily accessible, because to do polling in all fifteen school districts, it's super complicated. Because anyone can vote in any three of these polling locations. And one of the challenges we have is Jason could, uh, vote in an SP, and then drive home to Owego, and swing into the, Owego, and vote second time. Uh, because we have to track, uh, all of the voters across all the school districts. It's super complicated. So we need to have a clean vote, uh, to be able to certify the vote. It's, uh, I don't know how you do your school budget votes, but it's, it's a complicated process. And pretty much anyone can, can walk in and vote, do it here for three days, you commit it, you say, I live in, I have a parrot in Apple Aiken, and, and, uh, you know, license, I think, to vote. So, uh, so it gets, it gets pretty complex when you expand that to, uh, a number of sites. So we have one in the east region, out of Westwood's Department, we have one near Bosse's on the hill, and then, uh, one at the middle.
So these three locations represent the entire Bosse's, uh?
Yeah, we tried to pick something that was, you know, draw circles around everything, pop, pop, do it. We have a weird shaped region.
So, um, like, when, when you summarize the results, do, do you actually get visibility by district, or are you just get it by?
No, we only, uh, it's, it's simple majority.
Gotcha.
It's just simple majority, we, we would have no idea what school district, uh, how the president's voting.
You know, being of the sour community, sort of, I, I know that sour community, all the districts have the vote, for Bosse's capital doctrine. Like the, the, uh, L-Bike Center.
Yeah, it's a good question. So, um, it depends on, on what you're doing. So in this case, because the dormitory authority is doing bonds, uh, it does not require a local school district to, to vote to accept a vote.
So you, you guys are, are gonna be publicizing this, so that the voters, you know, you show up?
Yes, yeah. So we, they've seen the news, um, in, in the last couple of weeks, we've put out a couple of press releases. Uh, had news, had media in, did a media briefing for them, uh, gave them footage, gave them all the slides that go publicized. So we, we do have, uh, a lot of tracks on our BT Bosse's, on our website, it's right on our main page. Uh, you can go looking at, uh, all the slides, it's a presentation out there, um, all the content, the referendum. If, if you actually look at the, the proposition, you know, I showed you the numbers that were, that are figured in what the proposition is. Proposition taxes forty-six million, because we're only required to, we're not required to vote on replacing the electrical system. We can do that under, we'll be considering capital payments, right? Right, so, um, so you, you'll see the trades complex, the apartment, that parcel of land, um, our maintenance building, and, and, uh, maintenance, forty-six million.
I mean, we, we tried to keep costs down, like Dan said, by spreading it out versus assuming, we really need seventy, eighty, so if I let you know.
Yeah.
Well, I, I understand, I just, uh, I know this came up with President, Vice President's meeting a couple of weeks ago. There was confusion, uh, some of the people had gotten, uh, uh, I don't know how you're advertising, but they had gotten things in the mail.
Absentee ballots?
Yeah, absentee ballots, I mean, they had no idea what they were for.
Right, right, so we put a package in with an absentee ballot, we had to send out thirty-two hundred absentee ballots for, uh, disabled, that's required by law.
Right.
So thirty, that too, thirty-four hundred we sent out, um, and then we have absentee ballots, people are applying for, that we're also sending out. But yeah, they, they got a packet of information, but, you know, most people don't have any idea what Bosse's does.
Well, it happens so seldom when you guys do this, that, you know, voters are gonna be confused, that, that they probably would think that it was the school district that was building something in that Bosse's, you know, and.
It's a very difficult community.
Yeah.
And we've been, we've been out everywhere we possibly can, we want to be fully transparent. We're, these are probably older than you kids, and you just can't.
Oh, you can't.
Yeah.
You're, 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 like, this regular television.
We did, we did.
Yeah.
Come right up.
Yeah, Wednesday. So we, we would encourage you to get out and vote, of course, we can't buy out of all, but, uh, encourage you and the community to get out and vote. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to share with, uh, the planning. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me.
So vote twice?
What, that, you vote twice? But, yeah. I just like your word, but when you said that, I'm saying.
Yeah.
I think I'd rather work out a vote, I know that's, that's, not, not virtual, but, uh, it feels like more fun. Thank you, guys, any questions? Thank you, Mark, thanks, guys.
All right, so we need, uh, I guess we're moving on to section nine. We need a motion to, uh, for item nine point one to, uh, to stay in, you know, for our energy service.
So what?
Right? Other mic. Mic squared, sorry. All right.
Gee. Yeah, uh, Jason, my cops. Jessica, uh, my cop.
Uh.
Okay, item nine point two is turning the unpaid taxes over to the county, right?
Correct.
Need a motion.
So what?
Right, again.
Second.
Under?
Gee.
Right.
To the, uh, Jason, uh, my cops, uh, Jessica, uh, my cop.
Uh.
Joe. Four point ninety, four point nine reports.
I definitely agree. All right.
Go hot, yeah, go hot.
Okay. All right, moving forward now into the public comments section, we have a few folks that would like to speak to the board. Uh, so, uh, what do you mean, what do you?
Claire. Um, I wanted to talk to you all about safety issue in our schools with the attendance recording program, or system. Uh, my understanding is the, the school are required to take attendance at the beginning of each class. The problem is, is that what do they do with that information? So if a student was there for the class or, but not in next, what happens? Who's alerted that there's missing students? And there should be software available to when the teacher takes attendance, at worst, the student is gone. And there should be staff looking for that student. Three eleven-year-olds left school at noon, and were not found until five P M. And the school never knew they were missing. Had no idea. And all of them went to classes that should have had attendance taken, should have been on the bus on the way home, should have been in an aftercare program. And the student, students weren't found until a parent had tracked their child through their cell phone. These are kids that walked downtown, past sexy vendor's houses, went down by the river, went into stores. Kids that are never left alone, left the store, and no one knew. So there needs to be some sort of recording program, where if a kid is there, and then they're gone, the school is aware. The parents are aware, the police are contacted, the kid is looked for. And I want this fixed, and I want it fixed by the next morning, on the seventeen, or sixteen, or whenever it is. Because if your number one priority isn't the safety of the children, I don't know what it is. If something happened to those kids, and you never even knew they were gone? I tried to talk to the principal, the vice principal, tried to contact the superintendent's office. This should be a huge priority. I know that my, my daughter is a sixth grade teacher in another district, and when they take attendance in her class, if the student who was there is not there, they immediately, within the first ten minutes, have to look for that child. So how did the, the eleven-year-olds could just be gone for six hours and no one knew?
I think you made it for me. And we were back on the, I think, right, if someone, please get back to her, and we'll do it. Thank you very much. Mr. King.
Ladies, um, I'd like to express a concern, as well, about safety of students. Um, last Thursday, I sent, uh, concern to the less taught app, uh, which I think is that's artificial communication, correct? Uh, when I sent it, the response was, um, make sure that you know that you want to contact that. So I reset that message and included the things we talked about, which, in, in, correct it, it's two names, where we found a juvenile, they, they...
I don't know.
Okay, so, um, this concerns like air quality, air quality over at the C T B building, which the programs are now. Uh, however, it's questioning, I had a lead word, um, that they tweeted off due to the, like, poisoning, fuel air poisoning that I received. Uh, students worked in the building and they hadn't came to classes that day. I think they sent the students over to O A, O A N S. Um, I never saw any notification of anything, and I just wanna, as a teacher, if I have a report, like, I'm trying to use the methods that the district has in place. Um, but there's some other safety concerns that I've seen, uh, like stamping cards with no, like, fiberglass with no masks on, ventilation systems. The programs that are there are great, but having the correct safety procedures in place that the kids learn at a young age, like, when they're in the classroom, like, they're gonna understand what safety is. It's our job as teachers to make sure, as school district to make sure that, that we provide that safety card. Um, so, you know, with that, should I expect a return email? I don't know how the system works, like, in terms of communication or would it be a phone call?
Okay, go ahead and answer.
Okay. So I think so.
Thank you. Okay.
Hello. Um, have you reviewed the book incident? Um, it's been eight weeks now. That was a question in the library. Is there any update on that? And maybe we can heard anything on that?
That definitely...
Or...
It's that definitely they're reviewing it?
That's two weeks ago.
How long's that take?
There's a process? So with this being an issue, obviously at the state, at the state meeting, they were talking about book issues. Um, is there a way that you could, um, change maybe the process to make it speed up a little bit? To, are you willing, are, is the board willing to look into that so it doesn't, we're eight weeks waiting on a, or not waiting, look?
The board is... The board is waiting for the committee's report. We're, we're aware that they're finishing up their work, so...
So you're aware, okay.
We're waiting for their, their report back.
Oh, yes, is there, is there a time frame?
Process?
It's just a process, pretty thorough process that we'll, there's no timeframe open to it. It's a, it's a policy, it's on our, it's on our website, and it's a step-by-step process that is all. So the complaint comes, meet with the building principal, first librarian, individual comes in, expresses their concerns, if they're unhappy, they file a complaint, uh, to the superintendent. The superintendent, um, charges a necessity to put a committee together of different stakeholders to review and analyze, and it's just, it's a long step-by-step process that, uh, needs to be followed.
So in the meantime, what, what happens with the book? Is there still, no, I heard anything?
Nothing, nothing to look.
Nothing happens with the book? Okay, um, so committee, I'm asking you, do you consider maybe a change in the policy? I don't know, I don't know, help me quicker because you said access to this and it's not, it's not likely, it's not for education, academics, and, um...
Okay, we'd be happy to share a policy with you, as well, you can see it spelled out thoroughly, and then the other thing that probably we can do is for the board members, we can look at other policies across the state, but it's very similar to the other policies for book reviews. So, uh, but first, let's give you our policies, you can at least have a look at it, and then we can get other policies that is for, like, have access to, and be able to share with the board members, and then we can discuss this award.
Okay. Okay, um, also, is there an update on the new security system?
Yeah, you're gonna have to ask to Cindy probably find well over your conference. Barb Craig?
I guess I'll hold my tongue on a couple things. I just wanted to compliment the, um, athletic department again. I wasn't able to make the last couple meetings, but the cross-country invitational was amazingly well-run again, with a lot of compliments. Um, it was very organized, the kids had a good time, people seemed to move very smoothly. Um, the grounds were well-marked, it's one of the best marked courses that our kids run. So thank you to the, the athletic department and the grounds people. And the other, um, positive thing that I had was thank you to whoever expedited it or moved. I don't know, at the time, the temperature sign was still right smack in front of the Applelake entrance where nobody, except the buses and the teachers and people going in could see it, but, um, having that sign out by the road is a really helpful reminder for those of us who have older vehicles and don't have temperature and dates and all the fancy electronics stuff, so whoever took care of that, thank you.
That was one of mine, but I have to play, I try to like this, but anyway, I, of course, left, but thank you for noticing.
You have a, you back.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway. Okay, uh, we have, um, I know item eleven, we're just, uh, agenda items that we come in, upcoming meetings, uh, the climate or vice panel year, and, uh, the school climate presentation, uh, so that should be coming up in some, you know, hopeful this summer meeting, we should be able to have our schedule to do that. If not, maybe frankly, if they have things that include in that. So... So with that, we do have a personnel issue to discuss in executive session, but I need a motion move.
Can we make sure that we have the book to, uh...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think we've done, we are expecting a book, uh, to, but yes, um...
I have it on here.
Okay, that will be coming up, okay? So with that, I need a motion to move it to executive session.
So what?
Under?
Sorry. Gee.
Hi.
Hello. Jason.
Hi.
My cops. Jessica. My, I'll, I'll try to...
Yeah, it's a sense.